Duffy, James, LaFour, Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director Bartlet.
Here.
I'm going to turn it over to Administrator, I think, DeNovo.
Director, thank you very much. First on our agenda is under the better late than never category. We have a proclamation proclaiming the week of March 10th to March 16th, 2019 as Girl Scout Week in the County of Passaic. Congratulations. We have Sarah Molenowski, did I say that correctly? And three Girl Scouts, Deputy Director Lazara is going to present the proclamation. So why don't you join her at the podium?
So I have the honor of presenting this proclamation to the Girl Scouts. And I'm going to just, if you indulge me for a minute, I would love to read it so you understand what's going on with them. Whereas Girl Scouts is recognized as a national leader in providing the best leadership development experience in the world for girls. And whereas Girl Scouts brings time-tested methods and research-backed programs that speak to the strengths of girl leadership development, backed by more than 100 years of experience and expertise in the field. Whereas in Girl Scouts, girls develop their leadership potential through activities that enable them to discover their values, skills, and the world around them. Connecting with others in a multicultural environment, this is like a teacher's dream, you do everything. Whereas Girl Scouts is continuing the legacy of creating gender-balanced leadership in the United States and the world in its second century of service to girls by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making this country and the world a better place. Whereas, Girl Scouts offers hands-on, girl-led, girl-centered learning in STEM, the outdoors, and entrepreneurship, and abundant opportunities to develop invaluable life skills, helping all girls take the lead early and often. Whereas, only Girl Scouts offers girls a one-of-a-kind opportunity to become a Gold Award Girl Scout by engaging in leadership at the highest levels while addressing an issue that they feel passionately about. Whereas a Girl Scouts Gold Award, the highest honor of Girl Scout on earth, acknowledges each recipient's power and dedication to not only bettering herself, but to making the world a better place for others. Whereas, Girl Scouts was founded in 1912 by Julia Gordon Lowe, whose life mission was to build girls of courage, confidence, and character. And through her legacy, continues to have an extraordinary influence on the lives of millions of girls across the country. And whereas today, more than 59 million American women are Girl Scouts alumni, and two and a half million girls and adult volunteers are active members. And right here in Passaic County, New Jersey, there are over 5,200 girl and adult members. Wow. Let it be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby applauds the Girl Scout movement and Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey and designates the week of March 10th to 16th, 2019, as Girl Scout Week in celebration and recognition of the girl-led or girl-spaced where girls thrive and develop their talents and leadership skills. Wow. That's awesome. Thank you. And I would ask you to say your words. My opinion was fine, move on.
My name is Sarah. I'm just really delighted that March 10th to 16th is dedicated for Passaic County Girl Scout Week. Thank you all very much. And we have a few Girl Scouts from the town of Wayne. This is Sophia, Katie, and Nicole. They came out to represent the Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey tonight, so let's give them my hands.
We want no girls dropped, right? And we're going to take a picture together with us. So if you want to join us in the middle.
Yes. Congratulations. All right, Director. Next on the agenda are our annual presentation of our DIGGING awards. As you all know, the Passaic County Open Space Trust Fund gives money to, or for DIGGING awards that are then dispersed throughout the county. And we are always honored to have Jennifer Papa from City Green, who manages, hi Jennifer, how are you hiding back there, to make this year's presentation. So Jennifer, why don't you, I'm going to ask Phil Duffy as Chair of the Planning Economic Development Committee to join the podium as we...
Can you take the mic? I'll take it. Good evening, everybody. We're really excited to be giving out our ring round of DIGGING, Community Garden, and Neighborhood Farming Awards tonight. To date, we have over 67 community garden partners throughout Passaic County. We're giving out 19 grants this afternoon, or this evening, and seven of which are our new Pollinator and Habitat Restoration Grants. So besides growing 22,000 square feet of vegetables in Passaic County, our community garden partners are starting to create native habitat restoration projects that are environmentally sustainable, we're attracting pollinators to our vegetable gardens, and we're greening the county. And this is all with the support of the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, who have been behind this program since the very beginning. It's a wonderful public-private partnership between a nonprofit and a government entity, where they have the vision for the county and heard what the residents were asking for, and we are able to do the work and have the staff and resources to support all the community projects that we've been supporting all this time. So we're really proud to be partnering with the county and to provide all of this grant funding, technical assistance, and, you know, just regular old gardening workshops. Erin and Amy will be around to support all the new gardens, as well as a lot of our existing partners who have been coming back year after year, doing the great work. So without further ado, Erin's going to call up each of our garden awards, and we're going to give out the signs and take a photo off with each one. And at the end of ceremony, after we've given out all the DIGGING, Community Garden awards, we're all, all the DIGGING partners are going to go to room 105, and we're going to sign all of our grant agreements after that. Erin?
Hi, everyone. My name is Erin McGuire. I'm the Community Garden Coordinator with City Green. If you haven't gotten an email from me yet, if you're a DIGGING gardener, check your email. I want to start off with our Pollinator Garden Grants tonight. Our first grante is the North Halden Green Team. They have a $500 grant for their pollinator garden. And we're really proud of the Borough of North Halden because they recently designated the orange milkweed plant as the Borough's official flower. So take them around.
Congratulations.
Our next garden, our next garden partner is the Passaic County Housing Authority. They're a new partner for us, and they're not doing just one, but two gardens. They're doing a pollinator garden at their Hatch Apartments in the front, and they also have a perfect ideal location right along the river for a new community garden at their Murphy Apartments. And we're really excited because there's seniors as well as disabled adults who live in both the apartment buildings, and we think the gardens will really add to their quality of life. So. It's the Passaic Housing Authority for the City of Passaic. I apologize. We also, our next garden partner is Sprouting Totowa. They are one of our community gardens, but they're expanding to include a pollinator garden this year, and we're really excited to expand this garden project. So people come on up. Our next garden partner is the Fourth and Inches Foundation, or the J. F. Kier Skier Garden in Patterson. This garden is bringing on the legacy of their father, Larry Hilton Jr. We're honored to continue his legacy and revitalize this garden. So Lashay and your family, come on up. They're also doing a pollinator garden, and we're very excited about this project because it's at a very active community center, and we'll be sure that it'll attract lots of attention and provide a great educational opportunity for the public. Our next garden partner is the City of Passaic, the Department of Recreation. They are turning their pollinator garden into a sensory garden for an autism group that they have there. So Jessica, please come, come on up. Well, now we're moving on to our returning DIGGING gardens. These are our community gardens. They've been with us from anywhere from the beginning for five years, all the way up until just a few years ago. Our first garden partner is the Preakness Bible Church in Wayne. We like your dedication to the garden. It's an exemplary garden project, and we are thankful for your longstanding partnership. Our next garden partner, we have the Jewish Family Service and Children's Center in Passaic and Clifton, and we really admire how you're truly maximizing the potential of your small space in your garden. We next have a very longstanding partner, the Passaic Neighborhood Center for Women. They're in their sixth year of gardening. The garden speaks to the community goals of the center, and we're happy to see the garden committee expand each year with new members of women. So come on up, Sister. Our next garden partner is the City of Passaic, the Department of Recreation. They are turning their pollinator garden into a sensory garden for an autism group that they have there. So Jessica, please come, come on up. Well, now we're moving on to our returning DIGGING gardens. These are our community gardens. They've been with us from anywhere from the beginning for five years, all the way up until just a few years ago. Our first garden partner is the Preakness Bible Church in Wayne. We like your dedication to the garden. It's an exemplary garden project, and we are thankful for your longstanding partnership. Our next garden partner, we have the Jewish Family Service and Children's Center in Passaic and Clifton, and we really admire how you're truly maximizing the potential of your small space in your garden. We next have a very longstanding partner, the Passaic Neighborhood Center for Women. They're in their sixth year of gardening. The garden speaks to the community goals of the center, and we're happy to see the garden committee expand each year with new members of women. So come on up, Sister. Our next garden partner is Christ Church United Methodist, the Garden of Eden in Patterson. They have a very robust garden committee, they're doing a lot of small spaces, and they're also engaging the community, and we're very proud of the garden that they have. It's only their second year of gardening, but we admire everything you've accomplished in the garden, from engaging the community to all the children's activities, and we look forward to the second year. Our next garden partner is the Holland Christian Home, or lovingly known as The Farm, in North Halden. They are an apartment assisted living for seniors, and we like to see the social and therapeutic benefits that the garden's giving to the residents. Our next garden partner is the Father English Community Center, the Garden of Hope, part of Catholic family and community services. All of the people who go in the garden go directly across the street to the food pantry. Our next garden partner is the Canyon Economic Community Development Corporation at Canyon Baptist Church in Patterson. And we're really excited about this garden because the garden's been, it's going to be revitalized this year. It's been not used for a few years, so we're kind of bringing it back to life. So Ms. Robinson, Ms. Dorothy Robinson. And last but not least, we have a water assistance grant. We have a very robust garden in Wayne at the St. Michael's Church, the St. Michael's Neighborhood Garden. They have 45 garden beds, and they've been dealing with a leaky pipe, and you need to water those 45 beds, so they have a $2,000 water assistance grant for their garden. So we're going to call everybody up real quick for a group photo. We're going to kind of stand around the table over here in the front. 105, it's opposite side of the building, for our checks and our award packets. 105.
meeting agenda. Counselor, any late starters?
Yes. Mr. Director, through to the board, there is one late starter. It's a resolution authorizing Passaic County Department of Health, Division of Mispito Control to purchase a 2019 Ford Explorer, the dual-wheel drive, through the Morris County Co-op, in the amount from Route 23 Auto Mall, in the amount of $27,409.
Okay, what?
That would be, that would be K50, if the board...
Are there any items that should be removed from the consent agenda separate?
Yes, yes, Mr. Director. I would recommend that, as informed by members of the board, there might be some discussion about K32. So I would suggest that that item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately by the board.
Is there, given that that involves litigation, is there any to go into executive session?
Yes, there is, Mr. Director. I would recommend a short executive session to discuss, for purposes discussing legal, personnel, and contractual matters.
Okay. Anything else on our conference agenda? In that case, can I have a motion and a second to go into executive session? Freeholders, after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes.
So with that, we're going to resume the conference for a couple of minutes, we will see you all when we get back.
Welcome back to the regular meeting of the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, equal 9, 2019. Lou, would you like to start, please?
I stand corrected.
Let's try that again. We're still in the conference agenda. We have a motion to come out of executive session. Do you have a motion? Executive?
Freeholders, after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes.
And I have a motion to adjourn the conference. Freeholders, after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted of the reorganization meeting, filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law. Freeholders, after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes.
Please rise for the education pledge and honor. "O God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our freeholders in the County of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety throughout the Lord. Amen."
Please throw in your pledge of allegiance.
"Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of Israel, with liberty and justice for all."
Please remain standing for a moment. Silence for the men and women who died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and in uniformed response. We also this week remember Freeholder James's aunt, Louise Barleido, and our friend Mark Taylor's father, Bernard Taylor, a WWII veteran in the Navy, a bachelor of the Corps recently.
Director, could we also add Terry Keegan of City Municipal Judge in the City of Patterson, as well as attorney at our Passaic County Technical Institute. Perfect. Thank you.
I have a motion for approval of March 26th.
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes.
And a motion for approval of proclamation.
Go ahead.
Second. Freeholders, after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes.
I'll be brief, but I do want to mention, coming up this weekend, Saturday, April 13th, at 10:00 a.m., is the Passaic County Film Festival. Deborah Hoffman, our Director of Economic Development, is here, always does an exceptional job presenting films by students and amateur filmmakers here in Passaic County. It's taking place at the Fabian Ait Cinema here in Patterson, Saturday morning at 10:00, and Deb always does a great job of that. I also want to mention two other upcoming events. At the end of this month, on Monday, the 29th of April, at 7:00 p.m., the Little Falls Civic Center will be gathering with our county surrogate, Bernice Toledo, and an attorney named Collier, as part of our Autism Awareness Month programming, to provide a forum on guardianship and estate plan for families with adult children affected by autism and other disabilities. It's an important program that we've done before and are doing again for families who need that information. That is free and open to the public, and you can find more information on our county Facebook page. I also want to mention one of the items on our consent agenda today. K43 involves our planning for the arrival of the Vietnam War Memorial Wall to Garrett Mountain, the 8th through 13th of May. Freeholder Lazara has been working very hard on that with a bunch of veterans groups. And we're actually going to be keeping the park open 24/7 during those periods for veterans who need to spend some private time with the wall. And I want to thank Sandy and our whole team for the work on pulling together that very important event. So with that, Deputy Director Lazara?
I want to just give a huge shout-out to our Director of Housing, Janice DeJonge. She goes above and beyond with her job description and this past week, it was the sixth annual self-sufficiency recognition ceremony. And for those of you that don't know what that is, is that there are people who need Section 8 housing, people who need to have someone be their champion, help them become more than they are. And Janice does that every year for the last six years. And the women who were there, many of them received scholarships, many of them now are trained to do jobs, they've broken that cycle of poverty, and they're becoming self-sufficient. So Janice, again, it was a great event, and I commend you on that. And again, if people don't know, you go above and beyond to do this for the women that are part of your...
Yes. Today, we're also considering item number 45, our Public Works Committee, which will go to awarding the contract for new public works facility at the Nike Basin in, Nike Base, excuse me, in Wayne Basin, listen to me. Nike Basin in Wayne. This is a long-awaited project, it's a $16 million project. As you know, at Pennsylvania Avenue, our old county administration building, this is the only department that is still remaining in that facility. So hopefully, we'll be able to award this contract this evening, move along with construction, and finally get our, our facilities department to a really nice facility where they're able to accommodate all the vehicles, which is extremely important for us. It's also centrally located to allow for easy access for up-county as well as down-county, being right off the highway. And then the final step for that, obviously, would be to finally, hopefully, turn over that old administration building back into the tax roll by selling that property finally after all these years. As was the goal when this building was built, so. It's been a while.
Actually, it's still my thunder. Have a great job, once again. Kind of clock Saturday morning, it knows of our, the people that support this. Great job, once again. Thanks for the T-shirt.
There he is, Duffy's open?
Duffy's will be open that, that, seven days ago.
And I just want to tell everybody, since it's on our agenda, but you may not know, our next Freeholder's regular meeting, the Board of Chosen Freeholders, April 23rd, at the same time, will be held at St. Joe's Hospital in Wayne, in Myers-Coppin, New Jersey. So if anybody, you know, we take the Freeholder Show on the Road, we're gonna be in Wayne that day, so if you make it to St. Joe's, we appreciate seeing you there. And that's it.
Deputy Director, Law and Public Safety, we've made it to that, and we're informed that the new police class starting here the 22nd will have approximately 130 recruits. I had, I was having here in Passaic County, State. Also, the academy is offering specialized police training for educational and public officials titled "Before It's Too Late." It will, it will be able to tell, folks who participate, the telltale signs of potential active shooters in schools and colleges. The course will be held by the Public Safety Academy in Wayne, on April 24th, 2019. Enrollment is through the Police Academy. The other item, of the four resolutions on law and public safety, further consideration, I just want to highlight the resolution, our Passaic County Sheriff is applying for funds in connection with fiscal year 2020 Passaic County Protection Safety Act.
Thank you all very much.
Too late. Bye, all meetings.
This past week, we had trained to administer Narcan, and I want to thank our health director, Shirley Ngahel, for putting that together, and I think it's a great thing, we should all know how to use Narcan. You may never need it, hopefully, but if you do, Shirley and I thank you for putting that together. I took a class, and it was wonderful, and you all can carry it now. So thank you.
One last thing, Freeholder Director. Thank you. Okay. Also, and also some of my friends in the audience will appreciate this, we're also voting on a resolution to authorize management and land use agreement with the New Jersey Audubon Society at Rifle Camp Park, which is something that was requested from the community. It's a partnership that we're looking to move forward.
Anybody else feel a second? With no communications on the agenda, I'll take a motion to open the oral portion of the meeting.
Freeholders, up there? Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
This opens the public portion of the meeting. If you'd like to speak, please approach the podium. You'll have three minutes. Please sign in, begin with your name and address, and take note that anything you say will become part of the public record of today's meeting.
Freeholders, my name is Marvin Brown. I'm an attorney in Woodbridge, New Jersey. I represent the city of Clifton in the lawsuit with Montclair State University. That is item number 32 on your agenda today. The city of Clifton vehemently opposes the construction of the egress that Montclair State University proposes to make because it's not safe. And for many years, the county has been with the city in saying that the roadway is not safe. Today, you're being asked to vote on a resolution to approve giving permits to MSU for a roadway that remains unsafe. From the very beginning, the issue regarding safety relates to the design speed of the roadway. And although years and years have gone by during which there were discussions between the county, the city, and MSU, MSU has not done anything to resolve to the satisfaction of Clifton. And I will tell you to the satisfaction of the county, the design speed issued. After the county engineering department approved the issuance of this permit and the settlement that's before you, I received an email from the county, and I'm gonna read you part of it. You will note that our county traffic engineer believes that it, meaning the plan proposed by MSU, now meets the conditions, parentheses, except for the design speed, and parentheses. So what that email is saying, and it goes back to January 16 of this year, is that you're settling a lawsuit and agreeing to a road that is not safe. Why is this road not safe? Because it's built on a steep vertical downgrade of 10%. There is a severe vertical curve, there is a severe horizontal curve. The sightlines to the intersection with Valley Road and the Claim Road is inadequate. All of this has been pointed out by the expert engineer that Clifton proposes to use at the trial against MSU that's scheduled in a few weeks. Ironically, this engineer, Mr. Rasha, was hired by the county when the county opposed this road. Mr. Rasha today continues to believe that this road is unsafe. MSU says that there will be a 15 mile per hour speed limit for this road, that it will be enforced by the campus police, that they will close the road and the severe downgrade in bad weather. None of that really will come to pass.
Mr. Brown, thank you very much. You have three minutes.
If I could just say, what we would ask the county to do is table this resolution today. The trial is in three weeks. The court will decide whether this road is safe. Please, for the sake of the citizens of Clifton and the county, just let the court decide this.
Good evening, freeholders. My name is Ed Pacino, and I live at 109 Adams Terrace in Clifton. I would like to begin by thanking the freeholders for your over 14-year opposition to Montclair State's plan to put an exit onto Valley Road. I'm going to mirror a lot of what our attorney has said and maybe give a couple more details. You have before you this evening a resolution to allow MSU to build this roadway. This road, this resolution states that the Supreme Court has decided that MSU acted reasonably in their consultations with Clifton and Passaic County. This is inaccurate. The court stated, and I quote, "Review by MSU and its experts asserting that it has reasonably addressed the public safety concern is not sufficient. The local governments here specifically owe duty of care to the motorists and pedestrians at and around the county road's intersection with Yogi Bear Drive. Only MSU has decided that they have acted reasonably, not the courts or anyone else." Also, the resolution states, quote, "Both the Passaic County engineer and the Passaic County traffic engineer agree that the updated plans now meet all the safety concerns raised by the county." Again, this is inaccurate. The Supreme Court states, and I quote, "The county posits that the design speed for the downhill travel on the roadway at issue, coupled with somewhat sharp turn at the bottom of the roadway, and its connection with Valley Road, is a legitimate safety concern. The Passaic County has maintained that a 35 mile an hour design speed is necessary since the vehicles will travel above the 15 mile an hour speed limit. MSU continues to refuse this request." In a 2014 affidavit given to the Superior Court, this was written by Mr. Silverstein, and I quote, "The vertical curve at the bottom of the hill is only designed for a speed of 18 miles an hour, which would require the speed limit to be posted at 8 miles an hour, which is obviously unrealistic." That is not my opinion, that is your engineer's opinion. What has Montclair State done? Why did your county engineer suddenly say that this is safe? It's based on them, Montclair State saying, "We will maintain a 15 mile an hour speed limit." Is that realistic? No. And Mr. Brown told you what they are going to do. They're going to put slow down signs, flashing signs. They've done nothing. How much, why would the county abandon a position they have held for over a decade? Regardless of the outcome of the April 30th trial, Clifton will continue to fight this exit because MSU's accommodations are insufficient to make this road safe. Your engineer that was hired at the onset of this, that we work together with, continues to hold that opinion. How much compromise can be tolerated while maintaining safely? Will you settle for a safer roadway, or do you want a truly safe roadway in intersection with Valley Road for the 5,000-plus vehicles that will travel on it daily? This includes large trucks and buses filled with schoolchildren. The answer is obvious. You owe it to everyone using this proposed exit and Valley Road and its vicinity to continue to oppose it along with Clifton, which you have done unfailingly thus far. This board has always acted with integrity and honesty in this matter.
Very much.
Okay. You have done the right thing. I am certain you will continue to support what is right, safe, and just. In vote, no. And I have some information, if you're interested. Thank you very much.
Anne Schmackenberg, 268 Washington Ave, Clifton, New Jersey. Good evening. It's great to see the county moving towards more conservation efforts with the deer fence going in at Garrett Mountain Reservation this week, and this agreement that we're happy to see on the agenda with New Jersey Audubon Society at Rifle Camp Park. We're, we're glad to see things moving in a, in a more progressive conservation direction. Stakeholders, you know, of course, would like to continue having, having input and public input on the plans to say develop. We Passaic County residents need nature, but our natural areas need us too, to exercise good stewardship over them. This is especially true when it comes to the parks in Garrett Mountain and the Audubon Important Bird Area that they resuded, and these look like great strides in that direction, so thank you. On the subject of birds, I'd like to encourage you all to visit Garrett on one of the first two weekends in May, see what we've been talking about with all the birds up there, join one of the many bird walks, New Jersey Audubon, or Burton County Audubon, or one of the other groups on those weekends. There are big birding events happening and competitions. This is Global Big Day, World Migration Day, and they even have a World Series of Birding going on on those weekends. Migration tory birds are in their best colors, support their best plumage during the spring migration. They're not gonna be as beautiful on the way back. They're still great, but they won't be as brightly colored. And now, on another note, because I just have to say this, I'm a Clifton resident. I wasn't expecting this tonight. I'm a Clifton resident and taxpayer, and very familiar with the Clifton zoning issues, as well as a, as American attests to, I live in Clifton, have my graduate and undergraduate degrees from Montclair State. Actually, I've been going there since pre-K. So I'm very familiar with the traffic flow and safety patterns between the two. New construction is already being underway up there to alleviate this problem, so don't jump the gun. And please vote no to settling on the MSU exit issue today. Table this issue, it's not safe. I wouldn't want to make that turn coming out of that school. I don't mind going in that way, but coming out, it's, it's gonna be a nightmare. And there is no way to monitor that unless you're gonna have an actual person down there. You're not gonna, it's, it's just not safe. So, thank you. Just had to add that, but appreciate everything. Thank you.
The sign-in didn't go off in my three minutes, did it? Gerald Zekker, 55, Metcalf Road, Clifton, New Jersey. I live in the neighborhood where this roadway is going, and I, I am almost at a loss for words because everything technically that has to be said has already been said. I will just say this, you've been backing us for 14 straight years. We have attorneys who have given their opinion, we have engineers who have given their opinions, we have judges who have given their opinions, but it is the people in that neighborhood, such as myself, who have lived there for 50 years and have seen the impact that Montclair State, a city that was given its own right to expand any way it wants, and that is what they've done. It is a municipality out of control, and the roadway that they're asking for, it borders on the ridiculous. It's not safe. I come out of the insurance industry, I've investigated over 32,000 accidents. This roadway is an accident waiting to happen. Now, I'm a very safe driver. It's not a NIMBY issue with us on Metcalf Road, but I have a wife, grandchildren, daughters, sons, that sure, that travel this road along with my neighbors. And what you're gonna create, if you allow this roadway to come into there, you're going to create an accident. It will happen. Don't guess it, it will happen. Maybe you won't be here, and I don't want to have to come down here and say that by this roadway being granted, a death or a permanent injury occurred. If you live in the neighborhood, if you just take a ride by there, you could never vote on this resolution tonight. Let the courts decide, please. You've been with us for 14 years, please continue to be with us. Thank you.
To change the subject a little bit, I'm Skip Bartlett, Chairman of the CAD Board, the Act Development Board. First, I'd like to thank you for all the support that you give the...
Uh, first, I'd like to thank you for all your support that you give the agricultural community and all in the county. But I'm here again to talk about one oh one Oldham Road, the Meyer Farm. I had a meeting this morning with Matt Jordan, who assured me that the money would be there, so that I'm not worried about, and that he would reconsider this. But what I would like to do at this time is ask you to try and fast-track this for two, for several reasons. One, the family is starting to look at different developers to take over and settle off as a development. And once we lose that farm, you basically lost that whole gigantic piece of open space that you'll never get back again. And to be totally honest, as far as up county, down county, as far as down county goes, you're running out of any pieces that would ever be able to be preserved at this point. So a few pieces that are left, most likely will never be preserved because of the dollar value. So this was the most, uh, one that was most acceptable to everybody with the dollar value. That's part one, the family wants to get out. The second part is, if we don't move quick enough, the gentleman that wants to plant the Christmas trees on there will lose his window of opportunity. Those trees have to be planted before June first, because if not, he'll lose an entire year of growth on them. So that should be considered. I know most people don't understand the routine of an agricultural industry, but certain things have to be done at certain times, otherwise you lose that window. Now, I'm not saying it has to be processed that quickly, but at least to give him an assurance that we're moving on it, so he can plant some of those. I understand, on the Christmas tree farm, it takes close to seven years to finalize a product from stage one. Every year, you're losing a profit line on that, so that should be considered, if that's possible. And the other thing there would be, um, the Wayne Master Plan also had that as a preserved farm on their master plan. That should be also considered. They're totally in favor of saving their farm, so I think we should consider that as a, you know, a thing to consider also on that. But I would like to see that fast-tracked as possible, just so that he can move on and not lose an entire growing year on that. Plus, I hate to see you lose the farm to a developer. All right? That's about all I have to say on that. As far as the piece up on Valley Road, they have their grid. What they really should do is widen Normal Avenue so they can make those lane, that would be right lane, turns only, and leave the two lanes going to the left, and that would eliminate any carloads up there, but that's another story. I thank you for your time.
Prepare for a couple of our residents, and, um, you know, uh, I'm going to begin my thirtieth year as mayor on July first, and all those years, I think I've only had a couple of Free Holders meetings three times. Um, so I hope you realize the importance of why I'm here, and talks about the quality of life in a beautiful neighborhood. Uh, and we've fought this fight for fourteen-plus years together. Um, we've always appreciated the county's help. We have a court case coming up in a few weeks, and in about two months, a flyover from Cove Road, which will relieve a lot of the traffic from the university, uh, to Route forty-six West will be open. That's what we should all be waiting for, to see what effect that road will have on the relief of traffic in the area. Uh, the state of New Jersey putting about ten million dollars into that flyover, asked, after they all asked for it. And finally, it's being built because of the Route forty-six, Route three interchange chain, uh, improvements. So, what I ask for you is to come along and just at least table, um, what we're going to do tonight, until we go through the court case. And secondly, um, if you are going to vote, uh, I would like to see you have a second vote for all on the resolution. I appreciate that. I thank you all for your ability for the county, for the city, always. Um, and hopefully I might could come back and take my time. God bless you all.
So you know when that podium is supposed to be posted? Freeholders, after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Thank you all for being here and for taking the time, sharing your thoughts on all those topics. Uh, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, but a little bit unusual, given our process today with, um, number K thirty-two, so can I begin by having a motion to remove K thirty-two from the consent agenda and vote on it separately?
Okay. So that was, uh, after. Freehold, Freeholders after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Now can I have a motion to add K fifty, the latest article?
Take that motion. Freeholders after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Now can I have a motion to adopt consent agenda K one through thirty-one and thirty-three through fifty?
Move. Second.
And what else after? Uh, yes, the best one. Uh, what else suggested, because everyone cast their vote, and then should anyone want to add a comment? Do that after the vote. Okay, I stand corrected then. Now there's a motion in a second. Um, I'll entertain any freeholders who want to comment on K thirty-two before we vote.
But the vice of counsel was supposed to, I don't know what we're supposed to say, but I joined Clifton, it's been a fourteen-year fight, and it really hasn't done a whole lot, and I, you know, I, my vote will be no, in fact, no. Um, and I think that I would like to see the rest of the board follow my suit. And, uh, and I feel that we're abandoning Clifton. I don't trust Montclair State, I'm not going to say anything more, uh, because that's not a good idea, because it's ongoing litigation, but, but in fact, I disagree with what's going on. All right, sorry.
I, I would just like to, I, to, all due respect to my colleague, and, and, uh, we've been, we've already discussed this, but I, I would just simply say that I don't believe that any fight that's lasted over a decade, uh, I haven't been on this board nearly that long, but it's like that's lasted over a decade, which we, uh, uh, been, been, been with on an issue, uh, and there's been a settlement that, that settles the, the issues that we were looking to obtain. I can't in any way see that this, this body in any way abandoned any constituent of ours account on that.
Anyone else? I appreciate, uh, uh, Phil Dr. After, you're pointing out the fact, and one of our, um, public commentators who remarked that this is in fact a fight where the county has stood with the city of Clifton, uh, for more than a decade, uh, and the question at hand was always, uh, can this be done, uh, in a manner that maximizes the safety of the proposed road? And I want to thank our counsel, I want to thank our engineer, uh, not only for their years of work on the case, but also for the insight and information we got on, uh, the parameters, uh, of the proposed settlement that's discussed in K thirty-two, the list of items that were raised by us as safety concerns initially, and the manner in which each of those has been dealt with in the proposed, uh, settlement. Uh, I'm not the county's lawyer, but, uh, I know that, um, when you have the opportunity to have a settlement agreement in place, which itself becomes enforceable, uh, that's a powerful thing, and, uh, I will be, uh, voting yes, uh, with thanks for the input of, uh, all of our professionals and their work over many years. So with that, Lou, would you call the roll?
Freeholders after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
No.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
No.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Motion for the bill?
Yes.
Second. Freeholders after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
No.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Motion for the bill?
Yes.
Second. Freeholders after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
No.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
No.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Motion for pay notification?
Yes.
Second. Freeholders after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
No.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
That brings us to new business, uh, motion for personnel?
Yes.
Second. Freeholders after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Motion for the bill?
Yes.
Second. Freeholders after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Motion for payroll certification?
Yes.
Second. Freeholders after?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Departmental report, received above. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Take that motion.
Second. One of the roll call candidates? Oh, okay. After, I didn't know, I'm sorry. Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. You can keep your head.